Please turn off all cell phones. The agenda of the Pomp and Legues zoning board of adjustments, September 26, 2023. The following is the agenda of the regular minutes, excuse me, the regular meeting of the Pomp and Legues zoning board of adjustments. The meeting is to be held in the municipal building, 25 Lennox Avenue, on Tuesday, September 26, 2023, beginning at 8:00 PM. A written advance notice as required by NJ SA 10, Seneca on 4-1 headset has been provided of this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, giving the date, a time, date, and location, and to the extent known at the time, the agenda of this meeting. Such note is stated that formal action may or may not be taken. This meeting will be video recorded and be broadcasted for viewing at a later time for the public. The notice was posted on the bulletin board outside the offices of the municipal clerk reserved for this and similar announcements to provided to the suburban trends, a newspaper designated by the council and planning board to receive such notices, and three filed with the borough clerk. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the office we have none. Can I please get a roll call?
Mr. Hunt.
Here.
Mr. Abate.
Here.
Ms. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Koss.
Here.
Ms. Bernstock.
Yes, here.
Mr. Rowan.
Here.
Mr. Bate.
Here.
Mr. Nook.
Here.
Mr. Luciani.
Here.
Mr. Vagula says is absent.
Mr. Vagula is absent.
Correct. Can I address the minutes? Yes, we are going to have Andy address the minutes before we start.
This is just a brief explanation. We had a little bit of discussion last meeting. I think some of the members weren't here. The issue of members that are present, or actually that are absent, were absent with an excuse or without an excuse, has come to be of interest in all the boards and all the bodies of Pomp and Legs. Since you what the law is, if you are unexcused, if you're absent and unexcused for four meetings in a row from this board, you are automatically off the board administratively. If you are excused in one of those, then you're not. So the question becomes, and has to be, excused by the board, by the old board. So the practice in order to, and this is going on throughout Pomp and Legs and other towns, in order to kind of do it officially, the way it's going to be done is if a person is not here, Carm can't excuse, so you'll just be marked as absent on the minutes. When those minutes come up, if you believe that there was a reason that you should be excused, you can raise that with the board and say, while I was listed as absent, it should be excused because of X. If it's something confidential that you would choose not to, you would like to at least start it and not put it in public, at least have the discussion, you can talk to me beforehand, or we can have a closed session for attorney advice. You can have that, and we can have a discussion if you believe it's of a confidential nature. But that's really how it should be done, to make sure that if you are out for a, I'll say a good reason, and it's funny because the statute doesn't say, it just says what the board wants to excuse for, but generally it's a good reason, then you can ask that it be so reflected. But from here on in, since Carm doesn't have the power to do it, if you're not here, you'll be absent. If you ask to change that to be excused, then you can present it to the board. So anyway, if anybody's listed, and it says absent, and they would like to be excused, but you're back here, if you're here this week, you're not going, you're not going to be out four in a row, but if you would like to, you can so address the board. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, has everyone had the opportunity to read the minutes, and are there any corrections?
Yes, I have a correction. On page three, right after the words, Ms. Janelle would like some feedback on how to proceed to make this project acceptable and to go forward with this project. It says the board discusses and states they would like the applicant to scale back and stay closer to the required setback lines, but there's also a specific mention on reducing the building height. So I would add applicant to scale back, lower the building height, and stay closer to the required setbacks.
If you can do this, it's going to have to be voted on. I don't have a specific recollection, that's for the board.
So with this change, I do recall the height of the building being a concern, and I do remember the height as being part of the applicant to scale back. So at this point, do we make a record?
Is there any other comment?
Any other comments or corrections to the minutes?
Not the new, yes, the motion as amended.
Can you get a motion, can I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Hold a second there.
Roll call.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Abate.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Koss.
Yes.
Ms. Bernstock is present. Mr. Rowan.
Yes.
Mr. Bate.
Yes.
Mr. Nook is present, Mr. Luciani is present, and Mr. Vagula is absent.
Thank you. All right, we have correspondents, we have none. Application VOA 23-05, 31 Orchard Street. Please come forward. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Ms. Janelle on behalf of Renee Siera.
Please have a seat. Okay, so in front of me are your new plans. So why don't you go ahead through the plans, and I would suggest that maybe we outline the parts of the, or highlight, I should say, the parts of the scale back that was presented by the board.
Sure, so I actually do have the architect with me today. I was going to give a little background, but if the board doesn't feel that's necessary, I won't waste anybody's time, and I'll just bring the architect up for a while here, or if, you know, if you would show for me to get a little bit of background, since there's more members here.
You can bring the architect up, sure.
You were not sworn in for, right?
I was not.
Please state your name, spell your last, please.
My name is John Vavula, B-A-V-U-L-A.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
Yes.
Are you seated?
John, could you mind just giving us a little?
Just hold on one quick second. Now, although there are more members of the board here, does the applicant realize that they will not be voting on the applicant, or is that something that we should discuss?
There are several members of the board who were not here and have not had an opportunity to review the tape. They obviously can participate now, they wouldn't be able to vote, I think there clearly would be a forum, but maybe we could just, how many people?
Three.
Will be able to vote on the application?
How many will be able?
That are here.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
Okay, so you'll have six available members, so you can choose at the time, if you complete the application today, whether you'd like to proceed, but you will have six, which is clearly a forum.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Sure, I graduated from NJIT in 2004. I've been practicing architecture for the past 20 years or so. I've had my own business since 2015, and my New Jersey license is in good standing, and I testified in front of about a dozen boards between Morris, Sussex, and Bergen County.
Thank you. Okay, please proceed.
Could you give us a quick synopsis of the changes to the plans, between the plans submitted previously and the revised plans?
Sure, so what we did here with concerns of the left side of the house being so close to the property line, what we did on the second floor is we moved the whole left wall of the second floor in five feet, so that it now is five feet farther away from the property line. With that, it's one story now on the left side, just for that first five feet there. We also removed all the windows on that left side of the house, so there's no openings or anything like that that are close to that property line. We also removed that whole roof overhang on that left side of the house there. So those are the major changes that we did as opposed to the previous.
Corrections.
And there's no windows on the left side, so it's one continuous firewall, fire rated.
Correct.
So fire rated wall.
Yes, that left, all that left wall will be a fire rated wall.
And that would be on the addition, the upper, and also along the side of the property that would face the neighbors.
Yes, it will be that whole left wall, it will actually be that roof that's over there, and the entire second floor of that wall as well.
Okay, the issue that we did have regarding the height of the home, that really has not been addressed, and actually, from what you, if you look at your plans, you basically say that the house is at 29.6 as proposed.
26.9.
That's the existing.
No, proposed is 26, it's very small print.
Okay, 26, but if you look at your plans, it's much more, higher than that.
I think the way the building height is calculated, I believe it's the average roof height, so that's where the 26 comes in, it's not to the peak. But if it was to the peak, it is still 34.6, which is still under the required 35 feet.
Still confirmed the way it is.
Okay. All right, so what I'm going to do at this point, I'll open it up to the board to ask as many questions, your understanding of the plans as presented.
So have you looked in the neighborhood and seen any other properties that are 35 feet high?
I believe that the house to the left, it's very close, you know, it might not be exactly 35 feet, but it is a two-story house. There are other two-story houses on that block, so they're, it's, they're within the two-story.
Well, I drove around, if I'm not mistaken, just tell me if I'm wrong here, but you have a first floor level of 10 feet?
Uh, no, I believe it's nine, is it 10 feet?
I believe the first floor is 10, and the second foot, the second level is nine.
Uh, no, the first floor is nine feet, and the second floor is eight feet.
Okay. It's very hard to read these, it's very small print. So can we understand more about what the purpose and reason for going another 14 feet higher, because most of the homes in that neighborhood, if you look at them, many of them are tape cloths, and they're basically, they're two-story, but that's it, they're one and a half story. Okay, there's only a few colonials, and none of them come close, there's only one that I could find around the corner that would even be close to this. And this would not be a problem if the lot size was suitable, but we're looking at a property that has three feet on one side, three feet on the other side. How would someone even get a ladder up to do any maintenance on their property with only a three-foot span to get up 30 something feet? Does anyone, can anyone explain that?
They would probably have to go from the front or the rear. As you can see in the rear elevation, there's some one-story areas back there, so they would, you know, go from the front or the rear. Again, you know, this is, this side setbacks are existing non-conforming, so we're not making them any worse. We're not, you know, protruding into the side yards anymore than as everybody is. So, you know, the way people would maintain their house now, the roof would still be the same. And especially on the left side there, there's a one-story roof there, so they can get onto that roof there and then maintain the second floor there.
You say that you're not making anything any worse, but yet the previous structure was only 19 feet in height, and now we're talking about 35 feet in height.
Yeah, it's going straight up.
And what is the purpose, what is the reasoning for having, what is the added height, and what is the purpose of that?
Storage, and, you know, this is more of a modern colonial look that people like now, so I've been designing a lot of houses like this, and it's for the look and the storage. You know, they don't have a very big basement, you know, so people always need more storage as well, right?
What is the ceiling height going to be in the attic?
I believe, you know, as it slopes up in the middle, I'd have to take a look, but it's at least eight feet up there. And again, I mean, this does conform to the zoning requirement.
I think that's the thing, is that it is a conforming size.
I can't read this, can we get a bigger print or something that we can look at here? Because... Because nine plus eight is 17, and then we got 34 feet to the top, so that's 17 feet above. I'm not following how that happens, because looking through the neighborhood, we don't see anything like that.
Well, the slope of the roof is not 17, it's not a flat roof, so the front and the rear of the house, it slopes down to nothing. So you really only have that height in the middle part of the attic.
Yeah, but the sun's not going through there, right?
Sun?
Sun?
No.
So I can only say that I don't see how the neighborhood surports that.
This is, this is going, this is going to stand out, that's all I'm trying to say.
I can't understand why, if you're going to use it for storage, you don't need the 10-foot tile ceiling.
It's still conforms to height, though, so what would be the number that we would have to come down to, and why would we have to?
Well, your application said 27 feet.
Again, because the building height, I believe, is calculated by the average roof height, so that means the middle of the roof.
Is that something in terms of height, what we're talking about is calculated by an average versus?
Height is often calculated in a, is occasionally calculated in a way that doesn't seem logical, that it would be the average of the four corners, you know, from grade to the point of the four corners, not the highest peak in the center. That is typical. So I don't know, I was an asset planner, you know, the board's planner, the board engineer would be better, but we have testimony from a professional that dice number one, saying it was calculated that way, number two, even if it wasn't, the 34 is conforming, the governing body has said 34 is fine. There's a two-foot variant, two foot, two feet of that is set back less than 10 feet, but apart from that, the height, the governing body says that that's okay. So professional has looked at it, how you define, and that is, again, the height is typically not a single point, that's the highest point, it's the average of the four corners, that's typically how height is measured. Again, that's a professional impression, we have one professional assess five, but I don't want to repeat myself, governing body says 35 is fine. That being said, they are asking for variants, so many things are in play, you know, what the, whether or not the aesthetics have been taken into account, but 35 is okay with the governing body.
So raising a point of the aesthetics of the neighborhood, the height of the houses in there compared to the applications, the applicants proposing.
There's no windows going to be on either side of the attic space?
No.
There are all, there's no windows on either side of the house, is that, am I reading that right, or?
There is definitely no windows on the left side of the house.
And we did that for the fire precautions.
Right side, on the right side, there is one window in the stairwell.
Yes. Yeah, well, I would support it with a lower roof, that's the best I can tell you. I can't find support for this neighborhood, and there's a lot of, still a lot of issues with this much structure in that type of a space. It's still, even though the fire department can get there, it's still adding much more fuel and potential fuel for much larger fire.
We do have a letter from Mr. Keating.
I have read the letter. It doesn't change what circumstances and how much more fuel it's going to add to a fire.
And also, as we both stated, the building height is conforming.
That's conforming, and it's not conforming in many other areas, and it's a very, very difficult decision to approve. Okay, sorry.
I'd also like to point out that this is the third meeting that the applicant has been to. As you're all aware, the house was a total destruction, it burned to the ground. She has been attempting to now rebuild this for months. So at this point, you know, we are looking for something here, some, okay, go ahead.
As we have reviewed the plans with you for the last two meetings, now this is the third, there has been some movement, and we understand that the applicant is trying to replace the home, totally understand. But it is our responsibility to make sure that the home that is going to be reconstructed is going to meet the aesthetics, is going to meet the requirements of everything that we need to do to make sure it's safe not only for the new homeowner coming in, or the homeowner to replace the home, but also for the neighborhood. So I can appreciate the fact that the applicant has been here three times, but so are we discussing this application. So we're all trying to do the right thing for everyone, including the neighborhood and the applicant. So I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
All right, anyone else have anything to say regarding the applicant? That's fine. We did, go ahead.
Done.
Nope, anybody over there? Okay, so I have had an opportunity to talk to the building official, and also I did read John Keating's letter. As he stated, there have been some movement, so I definitely feel that if we discussed the applicant and the RNA, there are some things that, from a construction standpoint, I understand that the fire retardant material that's going to be used is in play, and it's also going to be used on the entire structure, so that was one of the things I know that was a concern. So we have nothing else from the board that I could bring to the table? Okay. At this point, we are going to open it up to the public to discuss the application and about the testimony that's been given of this meeting and prior meetings. So is there anyone from the public that would like to come up and address the board? Please come forward.
Please state your name and spell your last.
Melissa Laccicillo, L-A-C-C-I-T-I-P-L-L-O.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do. So I'm Renee and Wayne's next-door neighbor directly to the left. I want more than anything for them to be able to build a new house also, but I do not feel that it should be at mine and my family's expense. For a few hours last June, we stood across the street as their house was burning to the ground with flames and smoke and et cetera shooting at our house. And I quote the fire department by saying we were one to two minutes of our house being totally engulfed, and that was with a 10-foot distance from theirs. So I'm not only concerned about the safety of my family, but also of theirs and the rest of the neighborhood, because if my house went up and totally burned to the ground, it could have continued down the road. I don't understand that if a house needs to be built and rebuilt, why it needs to be more of the yard and closer to the neighbors. There's an ordinance for a reason, so I'm concerned with that, and I don't agree with it being closer to my house, even if there is a firewall there, because what I understood from one of the prior meetings, it doesn't necessarily stop the fire from spreading to my house, maybe just a little bit longer. But again, for hours, we watched it almost burn to the ground last night, so, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up and address the board regarding testimony that I was given? Please come on up.
Do you state your name and spell your last?
Siera.
I'm sorry.
Renee Siera, S-I-E-R-R-A. I understand.
Do you swear or affirm?
Yes, I do.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, nothing but the truth to help you out?
To help you out.
Thank you.
So I could be here for hours, but I'm not. Unfortunately, my family and I lost everything except the clothes on our backs. I would wish a fire on any point of view, or my neighbors. I'm so sorry the siding of our house got burnt. My deepest apologies. I lost everything because Louis Tom went back with my nephew and my fiance. All right, thank God my nephew got home, got the two dogs out, but it's been over a year. We have to be out of our rental by the end of this month, I have nowhere to go, and John stopped paying for my, my, my home that I'm in now, and I've been paying thousands of dollars to the architects to change every month to please you guys. And I understand what Melissa is saying, but we're not extending our house any wider than it was. The garage is staying the same, like it was always there, the other side is staying the same, like it was always there. The person I bought the home from didn't extension in the back, and I didn't see any zoning application, the variance is approved on that when I was looking to do all this work. But in also my defense, there's houses in the whole neighborhood, and one, if you stand in front of mine, very much down the street, you could see it. It's going to be the same, same, mine, it's the same thing. Everybody in the town is doing remodel into their home, just because they want to, which I understand, it's your house, you need more room, whatever the case is. But I feel like I'm being nailed to the cross here, because my house was on fire, nothing that I did, nobody was even home. Thank God my nephew got home from work early to get our two dogs out. And the poor kid who lost his mother six years ago, killed, goes home and sees smoke in his room, and it's like, he moved to Florida because he feels like he has no home, and it's just unbearable, unbearable, and I feel like it's very unfair for me to have to go back to here again next month, it's very unfair. And I truly hope that nobody you love or care about ever has to go through this, because it's, so many people have no compassion, and some that I don't even know, complete strangers, have more compassion for me than people that I know my whole life, to be honest. So I just think it's very unfair for me to have to come back here when the main issue was the letter from the fire official. And I spoke to the acting fire official, John Keating, and I asked him what would be acceptable to move forward. I said, I need to start building my house. The mortgage company is asking what's going on, like, we have this check here to rebuild, we need an answer. So, I mean, if we could approve it with some revisions going forward, I would appreciate that, but I can't go home another month not knowing. I know you guys only need once a month, but one month to me is so crucial, when you have no place to live, when, yeah, it's just, and then the months are getting colder, so it's going to be hard to build with the cold, those are going to be like another two years. And I think it's very unfair in a town that I loved and bought a home in, I honestly don't even want this town anymore. I love my home, that's about it. And that's really sad to say. I think it's really sad to say, somebody who lost everything in a fire has to go through all of this, when I'm just trying to compromise and just rebuild my house, so I can't go home.
Renee, may I ask Renee something? Renee, you know, if you were just... Renee, you know, if you were just rebuilding the existing home that was there, you wouldn't have this problem.
I understand, but why should I have to just rebuild what's existing when there's people around me that their homes are in good standing, they go to sleep every night, and they are doing extensions and second floor? If you just drive around the neighborhood, I have, I go, still pick up my mail at the post office, they could still kind to hold it for me. I do all my errands still around Pompton because I'm just familiar with it, that's where I lived. But I see houses and I take pictures. I have tons of pictures on my phone of all the houses around.
It's not the house, it's the setbacks.
I understand, I've seen that.
And I look very closely around your...
So when she's talking, let her go, when he's talking, let him talk. Nope, nope.
I've seen the setbacks, but I've worked with my attorney, my attorney, my architect, my engineer, I mean, I've spoken to all of them multiple times. I've been in his office multiple times, multiple times in my second home, I told him. You know, and I've spoken to, my fiance's uncle was a fire chief or in Wantagh, Kevin Platt for many years, and he said with the firewall, he thought it would be fine. So many professionals that we're speaking to are saying that it should be fine with the setbacks, that understand the setbacks that are now in this day and age are not what was acceptable back then. So technically, we would have to go around the whole town and not every other house to be in with setbacks, the proper setbacks. And to be honest and fair, not Melissa's side, the other house, that house had an addition, and that peak is very high, I think it may be higher than mine. And I feel like this looks high from the front, but from the side, it doesn't look that high. And I'm just asking to be fair. I'm not asking to, you know, I want to build just because I want to. Now, hold this money, I lost everything, we lost everything.
How much difference? My architect is bad, I guess. How much difference is there between the two houses from what there was?
Are you guys okay over there?
She was just asking the setback from the garage side.
Sorry.
The cropping line.
It's three point five, which is the existing, which it was before the fire.
Right.
There's no change. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Is there anybody else from the public that would like to come forward regarding the application and the testimony that was given? I see none, so I will close that public session. Okay. So I would like to make a statement as to, I understand you put in the fire retardant material there. I would ask that the fire officials, the building officials from town be consulted during construction to make sure that all the requirements and any recommendations that we make during construction happens.
Yeah.
That's agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. I know that's a concern of everyone on the board, it's a concern of the homeowner to the left, and I know it's a, your owner's concern as well. And I totally get that she has to have been here three times, but unfortunately, it's something that needed to happen to make sure, in my opinion, to make sure that everyone got all the answers that they needed to, to make sure that everyone, issues were addressed. So at that, at this point, I'm going to ask for a vote or a...
Motion to...
Motion to approve the application with the changes that I just spoke about regarding the fire official being included and also discussed in following any direction that they may give to approve this application.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Local.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Bate?
No.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Bage?
Yes.
Caris.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
So next month will be a resolution. I'll let you, I'll let you see it before I...
I appreciate it, shoot it to me and I'll take a look.
You got it.
Okay. Thank you very much, we appreciate your time very much, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to application BOA 23-08, 237 Riverdale Road, Pompton Lakes. Are you here? If you are, please come forward.
Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Michael Brennan, D R E, and...
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Let me sit down.
No problem.
Couldn't see it. All I wanted to do was watch it.
We take a five-minute break. You can do whatever you want, go to the chair.
Can I please ask for a five-minute break? Be convenient, five minutes. So everybody be back here in five minutes.
Yeah, to the board.
See Wesley's room done?
What's up?
See Wesley's room done?
Yeah, I got, you got it done. I'm in the room, yeah, Jason, I saw Jason Bros.
I don't know, I can't see what he's saying.
That is, he's taking over Sonny's. He's been doing... Sonny's in Florida.
I'm in Florida.
No, no. And then...
Watch yourself. Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call a meeting back to order, and we are back with applicant, where's my notes? Applicant BOA 23-08, Michael Brennan, 237 Riverdale Road in Pompton Lakes, New Jersey. Welcome.
We are requesting a variance to section 190-15B2, require thirty feet, proposing twenty-five feet for a front porch extension to seven feet by thirteen feet by twenty-four inches. So it will be an additional three feet from where apparently said.
Okay, I did, I did drive by today, that was my white pickup truck on the side when you went to your backyard. I did want to take a little ride around just to make sure that the applicant, and that's what we normally do, I did see that there are properties to your right that have done similar things. So from the neighborhood standpoint, it'd be, you know, cosmetically same. So I have no, you know, I'm okay with this, but I always open it up to the board and let them comment on your project. Anybody on the board have any comments?
I drove by too, it's five feet.
That's right.
Hard to see, different.
I, I drove, well, I drove by, but I also talked to Mr. Brennan, and I have no issues with this.
Okay. Anybody else? One of the, one of the correspondence that we did get was concerned about, you know, for traffic and making sure that your construction people don't park on, so just make sure that is communicated, please. So with that, everybody else has spoken, so we would like to open it up to the public. And anybody in the public that would like to come forward and ask the applicant regarding his testimony regarding the application, please do so now. Since I see no one coming forward, I will close that session. Can I get a motion to approve the application as proposed?
Second.
Local.
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Bate?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Beresok? No.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Bage?
Yes.
Mr. Nuck?
Yes.
Mr. Lassiani?
Yes.
And Mr. Vagulis absent.
So you've been approved, next month, there'll be a written resolution that the board memorializes, and then that gets published in the paper. And anybody from the public would have forty-five days from then to challenging to the court. You can judge for yourself the likelihood of that happening. If you want to start construction or do something before it, you can go to the construction office, you can sign a waiver that says, I understand that I'm at risk and we may challenge this, but you can sign a waiver and then you can submit your permits.
And they asked that they give them twenty-four, forty-eight hours to get that done because of, sound needs time to put that together.
Oh, it sounds it's twenty days to issue a permit anyway. Yeah, twenty days from application, so.
Okay. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, resolution, where am I at here? Resolution, BOA 23-04. Everyone had an opportunity to read the resolution, and if there is any corrections or additions that we need to discuss. There are none, then can I please get a motion to accept this application?
Show move.
Uh, resolution. Second. Local, please.
No, she's ready.
This will ask, this will ask, there has to be somebody else.
Yeah, the only people that can vote on it, people of the press, you got it.
I'll second.
Done.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Bate?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Beresok is present, Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Bage?
Yes.
Mr. Nuck is present, Mr. Lassiani is present, and Mr. Vagulis absent.
New unfinished business, we have Mr. Jared here, do we have anything from open space that you would like to discuss?
We did have a meeting the past month.
You did not, okay. So that was not done, so we'll move forward, a public discussion, anybody from the public like to come forward and talk to the board about any topic? I see no one, so we'll close that session. Can I get an adjourn, a motion for adjournment?
Show move.
All favored?
Done. Thank you.